Good evening. We are here for the regular work, uh, regular session of the Neutonia County Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, five P M. The meeting's been called to order. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Frill.
Here.
Commissioner Laird.
President.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Nick Leeson.
Here. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of legal advice pending our threatened litigation and personnel.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Frill, seconded by Commissioner Milne. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session. We will return right at five thirty. Thank you. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would at this time entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mullen, segmented by Commissioner Freel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those consent agenda items have been approved. We'll turn to our, we don't have any contracts, agreements and resolutions, so we'll turn to our public hearings. The first public hearing is the Resolution eighty-three twenty-four, Transfer of Funds. I declare the public hearing open for the consideration of Resolution eighty-three twenty-four Transfer of Funds. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Neutrona County Commission and other applicable laws. May we have a report, Madam Clerk?
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for your approval tonight is Resolution eighty-three dash twenty-four, which represents a transfer of funds into various general ledger account lines for various reasons. First off, we're going to transfer two hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and four dollars and ninety-three cents from unanticipated revenue into the various account lines that are outlined in the resolution. A few highlights of these unanticipated monies are, the Coroner's Office got a couple scholarships, so we're transferring some money into, back into his personnel training line. We also hosted a Wyoming County IT Directors Conference, and some of the attendees from various counties helped pay for that conference. So there's monies being transferred back into the Commissioners' dues and convention expense line. We've also received some WARM funds for various items. The main, or the biggest amount would be for the cat loader repair, for the, for the cat that was wrecked. So we did receive reimbursement from WARM for the majority of those expenditures. Again, some more money from WARM for some damaged vehicles. And then the rest of the transfer are projects and grants for the Sheriff's Office, and that is outlined in the memo that was attached to my memo dated twelve seventeen of two thousand and twenty-four. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions? There being no questions for our clerk, at this time I'd ask for individuals wishing to speak in favor of Resolution eighty-three dash twenty-four to please approach. Second call for individuals wishing to speak in favor of Resolution eighty-three twenty-four Transfer of Funds, please approach. And third call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of Resolution eighty-three dash twenty-four. Any individuals wishing to speak in opposition, please approach. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Final call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please approach. There being no one to speak for or against Resolution eighty-three twenty-four Transfer of Funds, I now declare the public hearing closed. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Resolution eighty-three dash twenty-four for the transfer of funds.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner North, segmented by Commissioner Mullen. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Resolution eighty-three twenty-four has been adopted. We'll turn to our second public hearing, that being the twenty twenty-four ICC Code adoption. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the twenty twenty-four ICC Code adoption. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Neutrona County Commission and applicable law. May we have a report from staff?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we are back here again this year for the adoption of the twenty twenty-four ICC Codes. If you recall, back in March, we did adopt the twenty twenty-one ICC Codes. We were quite far behind on those, the adoption of those codes. We are on track and on time with the requirements of adopting these within six months of the state adopting the twenty twenty-four codes. I believe that they officially adopted the twenty twenty-four codes back on June twenty-eighth. So we do need to get these adopted to stay in compliance and retain home rule. Before you, we do have the International Building Code, the Existing Building Code, the Fire Code, the Fuel Gas Code, the Mechanical Code, the Plumbing Code, and the Residential Code, all the twenty twenty-four additions. We had the opportunity throughout the fall to work with our, the Neutrona County Board of Appeals to review the twenty twenty-four codes and our resolutions that we had adopted and update these resolutions. Brad can give you a little more detail if you wish, but there wasn't any major changes between the twenty twenty-one codes and the twenty twenty-four codes. So at this time, we are asking that you sign the resolutions and adopt these updated codes so we can retain home rule.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook, Councilman of many titles. Mr. Morrison, do you have anything you'd like to add to that report?
Mr. Chairman, I, all I'd add is the significant changes between the twenty-one and the twenty-four was, probably ninety percent of it was reorganization. No substantial change in a lot of the requirements that would initiate any concerns with contractors that I could find.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there questions for staff? Commissioner North?
I just have a comment. I just appreciate all the time that was put in on this and how much time the Contractor Board actually did. Cleaning up a lot of the current codes, making them more simplistic for our county citizens, making them a lot easier to move forward with. And I do appreciate the time that was spent on that, so just wanted to share that.
Any questions for staff? All right, no questions at this point. We'll open it up for public discussion and then see if there are questions for you after that.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask those individuals wishing to speak in favor of twenty twenty-four ICC Code adoption to please approach. Second call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ICC Code adoption, please approach. And final call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the twenty twenty-four ICC Code adoption, please approach. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the Code adoption, please approach. So I can call anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Final call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please approach. There being no one to speak for or against the adoption of the twenty twenty-four ICC Code, I now declare the public hearing closed. And I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-four ICC Code, adopt, adoption as a resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mullen, segmented by Commissioner Freel. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that the people, the citizens of the county understand that if we don't adopt these, then they go into place in full force by the state, and we lose home rule. And that's something that is kind of difficult, is kind of hard to explain to a, to a lot of people. But it's something that this is actually by adopting these codes, we actually have a whole lot more control over what we do and how we do it. And I said, the Contractor Board, when they, I did sit down on those, those meetings, and they went through a lot of these items that were cumbersome and problematic for the citizens of our county. And they eliminated a lot of those. They took out a lot of that area and made it more simplistic. So I just wanted to share that.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of our county attorney. Jared, what happens if we don't pass this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Laird, if we don't adopt these rules, then we will lose home rule, and we will lose the ability to essentially interpret the codes and have the latitude in our building department to enforce the codes as necessary, and it would go back to the state for enforcement.
Is there a statute to that effect?
Yes, thirty-five nine one twenty-one.
Says what?
That it, it allows the State Fire Marshal to delegate authority to the individual municipalities or counties to interpret the codes.
And if they don't, does it say what happens?
It, then it goes back to the state for interpretation and enforcement of the codes.
Does that say that in the statute?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Holbrook, Mr. Morrison, thank you for your time on this. At this time, we will call for the vote. All in favor of the twenty twenty-four ICC Code adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that has been adopted. Thank you. We'll turn to our public comments section. If you would like to make a comment, you are welcome to.
Rose Mary Saban, Neutrona County resident. Last time I was here, there was a problem with this mic. Breaker one-nine, radio check? Check. I will say thank you for the explanation on the codes. I did contemplate coming up and requesting that, so appreciate it. Does this commission have ultimate oversight over zoning and planning? Why was Haystack Solar application voted on by zoning and planning with a recommendation of due pass when it was deficient? Was it because of any directive by anyone on this commission? Mr. Nicolason, you answer some questions, but not all. Why are you selective in the questions that you answer? You've been sitting there for the past year, just as you are now. Is your lack of response from fear of the truth? Do the residents of this county deserve to hear the truth? Why has Hal Hutchinson served for fourteen years on zoning and planning when Resolution ninety-one oh one states, "No member shall serve more than two consecutive full terms, or two full and one partial term." The resolution also states that all members of the duly appointed boards serve with pleasure of the Board of County Commissioners and may be removed with or without cause upon discretion of the commission unless specifically precluded or protected by state statute or governing. The resolution also says all duly appointed board members shall act in a fiduciary capacity. Does this commission believe civilian or government employees serve public interest better? Do you, does this commission believe the vote would have been different for Haystack Solar if two zoning and planning members would not have been involved? Chad Zeal and Cheyenne Houston had applied for seats on the board. Was zoning and planning limited on tabling or deferral of that application because of the zoning resolution? The resolution rewrite seems to account for a huge percentage of the failures this county has experienced since its adoption without a clean copy. Why was it adopted without a clean copy? Why has it been left to stand for two years with little to no effort to remediate the document? There's been numerous requests made for it to be rescinded with no willingness to do so. Again, is it from fear of the truth? I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Blessed New Year. Thank you.
Any others wishing to make public comment? Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Anything? Welcome.
So, I'm Sarah Johnson, and I live over in the Westland Park area. And we've had, the neighbors are pretty upset. So there's been some confusion as to what's going on over there, and we've kind of, I'm just starting to do the research on it and understand what happened. So basically, I'm at forty-four hundred Smoke Rice in the Westland area. And it's an old neighborhood from the seventies, right, we're on about an acre out there. Nice rural, it's zoned urban and rural, but right, it's an old nice neighborhood, okay? And the average house price out there, depending on the mark, is probably about three, four hundred thousand, okay? And as we know, we've all finally got those property taxes down manageable again a little bit. So all of a sudden, my neighbor across the street puts a piece of his house, or a piece of his yard for sale. And I'm like, you know, I'm in mortgage. I haven't seen zoning on that thing for a few years. But that was all one lot legally. So like, how did they break out that lot? You're not supposed to do that out here. So I asked the neighbors, I said, what's going on? You know, does anybody know, you know, what this goof is? And they said, yeah, so what we're hearing is that they got an HOA exception on that lot, and it was horse property. The guy had it before, used it for horse property, for horse property. And the guy behind, and it's a horrible lot, by the way. It's just a horrible lot. I don't know what else you'd use it for, right? For horse property. And I was like, okay. So they said they made an exception from one owner to another for it to be horse property. I thought, okay, I guess if it's going from one neighbor to another, but we keep it horse property, well, fine, right? And you have to realize that I looked right up on that property, right? My house looks right up on that property. So I thought, I wonder how they got that lot separated. So all of a sudden, a construction company shows up and drops approximately, and I don't know this exact figure, okay? Approximately four hundred thousand dollars of landscape rock, you know, block down the bottom of this ravine. It's a very steep ravine back there. And I'm like, that's a hell of a barn. So I pop over to the contractor and I said, I mean, we don't even have anything in the neighborhood with four hundred thousand dollars, right? Or, you know, like, why are we dropping four hundred thousand dollars of landscape block down this weird ravine? What are, what are you guys doing? And he said, well, um, first of all, I said, I thought this was meant for, well, first of all, he says, no, it's going to be for a house. A very nice, expensive house. And we're like, how, how expensive are we talking? You know? And he's like, yeah, this nice couple, right, from Alabama, wherever, moved here. And they have another house, but they're going to build a house here. Said, okay, well, we're not supposed to have houses on the small of a lot out here. Nobody has a house on a lot that small out here. That would look weird, you know? It's very odd. We like the rural feel, right? And a bunch of these three houses right together. Be the only ones in the neighborhood, be non-conforming. Plus, I'm really nervous about their backyard, because you could get hurt walking down there, fall down in that ravine. So like, I don't, I don't think that's a great idea to build a house there. What's going on? And he kind of said to me, well, I'm on the HOA of Skyline. And I'm like, okay, are you telling me that you got the HOA exception? Well, your HOA doesn't do anything but snow removal. True, but I thought you guys got, you know, an exception. Okay, so somebody must got a hold of somebody. So what you're telling me is nobody got a hold of anybody in our Westland HOA. Well, it's all very legal. I was there when the lot was bought. I didn't say anything about that. I'm just curious as to what's going on. So he says, well, these people drove along, they saw the lot sign, and they bought the house, and they said it's for this very expensive, nice view. That we're going to build this giant house that's very expensive. I'm thinking, wouldn't this go better in Centennial Hills? But they said, okay, so this is a four million dollar view or whatever. It's my yard. Now, my yard is nothing special, folks. So I'm like, why are you building a house that looks at my yard and looks at my house? And it's this- And looks at my house, and it's this four million dollar view? Very weird. And the contractor's like, "Look, you're just gonna have to deal with it." And I'm thinking, in the back of my mind, I hope my taxes don't go up. What's going on? I don't want to look at this thing for four years, or for the next four years. And, right, we got told one thing, and now something else is happening. So, I don't know where to start. So, I popped down to Title Company, I said, "Can we look at this?" And they said, "Yeah, there was title exceptions made to get this lot sold." I said, "Okay." And then here's who sold it to, and grabbed the covenants on it, sure enough, haven't changed since nineteen-seventy-five, right? Okay.
Ma'am?
Yes?
Hi. We're about out of time for five minutes.
Hey.
I don't understand.
So, my question is, why do we have a nonconforming home that you guys voted as an okay going up on a lot that should have never been used for a pri-, thank you for telling time, primary residence right there? Or a residence?
Do you know the address off the top of your head?
It's brand new. I think they, they said it's forty-four-ninety-two, and I checked with planning.
Forty-four-ninety-two and the street?
Smoke Rice.
Smoke Rice.
Yeah. So, I crossed the street from my house. And so, anyway, I'm like, this is nonconforming to the neighborhood. And they said, "The county commissioners made all the exceptions on it." Sounds like everywhere I've looked, there's been exceptions after exceptions after exceptions after exceptions after exceptions for this house. I'm like, this house doesn't belong here. I mean, it's a ni-, I'm sure it's gonna be a nice home, but it doesn't belong in this neighborhood. And it doesn't belong on a half-acre lot, right? That doesn't make any sense.
Have you had an opportunity to communicate with either the planning or the building department?
I did, and I all got sent to you guys, because you guys made the exception for the property.
All right. Commissioner North?
Sorry, you talked to me.
Yes, I did.
And I'm very familiar with that area. And, yeah, I did not understand why they wanted to divide that lot to start with.
Yeah.
And like I told you that night, I recused myself, because I'm, I work in that area. So, there was a division in property. And at that.
Maybe they didn't give you all the information.
To the best of my knowledge, I don't remember anybody coming in and speaking against it that night when we had it on the.
What did they tell you it's gonna be for a giant?
No, they didn't tell us.
Over-expensive primary home on a half-acre lot in an area that's all enroll, large lots? I mean, to me, I guess, it's, it's one thing to ask for an exception. You guys are like, okay, I guess somebody wants to split out their lot, okay? I mean, that's, you didn't do anything wrong.
And that's basically all they did, was come and ask us if they could split up their lot.
Sure. And that makes sense, but why didn't they give you all that information first? Would be my question. And then my second question would be like, what are they trying to get away with? Because if they come to you guys and said, "Hey, will you give us this exception on this lot? We want to build this giant house right here," you guys would have went, "Why?" You know, and you probably would have said, "No." And they didn't. And that's my concern. And it doesn't conform to the neighborhood. It doesn't make sense. The whole thing doesn't make sense. I popped in planning and zoning, they're like, "Oh, yeah, we've gotten like fifteen exceptions on this." I'm like, what are we doing? I don't want this house, this four million dollar house or whatever, across the street from my house. It doesn't, it doesn't work. So, I don't know what we can do from here, because everybody sent me here and said, "Try here," because these are the guys that gave the exception. And I don't know how to approach and say, "Hey, I feel like this is improper use of that lot."
The only thing that I remember this board doing was giving the authorization to split the lot. That's the only thing I remember. We, we don't.
So, where can I go from here to find out if they're allowed to build a property there, because we're county, that's nonconforming to the neighborhood?
So, you know, I, I think it's, I think Commissioner North is right. I think we approved the lot split or the size and dimensions of the lots. But in terms of the size, nature, and character of the house, that didn't come before us. And, and it wouldn't, we're not the Architectural Review Committee.
So, do I go there?
Well, if it were me, I'd look at the covenants.
I did.
And does that have?
They haven't changed them since the nineteen-seventies when the neighborhood went up. Nothing's ever changed, I believe.
Is there a violation of the covenants?
It doesn't say anything in there about building a four million giant house on a half-acre lot that wasn't supposed to be split out for a primary residence. It's simply nonconforming to the neighborhood.
And when you say nonconforming, do you mean in terms of the size and?
Size, planning, and building, yep.
The county doesn't really have a role in telling, in telling someone how big their house is, as long as it meets the setback requirements. There are a few other things that, that we get a way in on, like if it has water, utility.
Yeah, which I'm having other issues with too, because now they're tying in all my utilities and stuff. So, anyway, but, and they've been very rude to my, this is aside, but they've been very rude to my lot. I've got lots of pictures. They tore up my yard, and they tore up all my stuff. And I've got trucks and dozers parked all over my yard. And they said, "Nope, I got an easement, I can be here." Okay.
Well, if it were me, I'd, I'd look to see if there are applicable covenants, if there's a violation of the covenants, and then whatever remedies you have.
I asked, and nobody has the ability to investigate it, is what I was told in planning.
Well, I, and I think that might be true with respect to what the county could do. Consulting an attorney and looking at it from a civil perspective is something that, that you could look into.
I have briefly. They don't know enough about it yet, but they're kind of sending me back kind of this direction to see, you know, where we can start. I can, I can go that direction. I can have a land use attorney look at it or things like that. I would rather, before I took that step, I kind of wanted to take all the other proper steps, because I feel like these people were kind of fibbing, and we've gotten a lot of fibs. And I've caught probably about twenty fibs as I've been researching this. And I don't like that. That's a lot of red flags for me. I like people that are direct and exactly truthful about stuff. And I don't think that these guys approached this in a legal way to get what they wanted done. And I don't think they told people, as they got these exceptions, what they were doing. And, you know, the contractor's getting paid for a whole year off this, this build. You know, he was very rude to me, and that's fine. That's okay. He can be that. But I think that it's interesting that he's kind of gotten away with all of this. And he's clearly involved in all of this. And the people that are involved in this project kind of pushed all this stuff through. And everywhere I went, everyone's like, "Yeah, well," and I'm like, hmm, 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 did you tell what you were doing? Did you tell?
Well, we're out of time for tonight. You're welcome to get back in touch with us. I don't see a county involvement in this unless there's been some sort of noncompliance with one of the rules.
So, architectural is where I'm going next.
I would go to your covenants and see, see what they provide.
Architectural for, for, okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment tonight on any topic? Welcome.
Garvin Duran, I live out in Mills. I was going to speak to the Haystack debacle. I was here for the last meeting. Still can't, I've generated electricity all over the world. Can't understand how you can take two thousand acres dedicated for a two-hundred-megawatt plant, if it goes to a hundred percent productivity, and it won't. Solar does not. If you get sixty percent out of solar, you're real happy. And the first storm that comes through here and busts them panels up, they're gonna leach toxins into the earth. That ground won't ever be useful for anything ever again. And I don't care what they tell you about how great those panels are. They leak toxins. They break up, and water runs over them, they're gonna leach into the ground. It's going to affect the groundwater out there. I don't live out there. I chose to live in Wyoming. I'd live anywhere in the world I want. I chose to come here. That's twenty years ago. I don't want to see this ruined. We see plants like that coming into our community? Where, where are you gonna dispose of those panels when a hailstorm does come through? Just bury them out here? And that's what we got all the windmill blades. And I've watched those things come in from China by the boatload. I've sailed for fifty years. I've been out there. I've seen what's, what's out there. We, we don't want Wyoming to be like Michigan, Minnesota, or Jersey. Please, say no to this old solar plant. That's pretty much all I got to say. I wasn't gonna talk on taxes, but yeah, that's for another, another subject.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on any topic? Okay, then we'll turn to our Commissioner comments section. Commissioner Laird?
I don't like Wyoming being a toxic waste dump either. But they got something through their burying radioactive waste up in Fremont County, that comes from back east. They're piping that carbon recapture poison that they inject into the ground. They got a pipeline coming from Colorado down by Laramie. They want to put one here, which the pipeline may be coming from Nebraska. I, I mean, you know, they want to bury all their waste on us. I'm not happy with any of that. The issue with the, with the solar panels is, from what I've seen, they're highly underinsured if they cause damage. You know, it's like you go around with ten thousand dollars in insurance, and you run a red light and hit a hundred thousand dollar car. You don't have enough insurance to cover it. And they, they don't have enough insurance right now to cover it, unless their parent company agrees to back up paying for any damage that may occur, and so far, that hasn't happened. But we'll hear from them here in two or three weeks, I guess. Mr. Freel? Thanks a lot for your service. Know tonight's your last night, and you've been the mayor, you've been the chairman, and I wish you the best in the future. Mr. Millen? Nice vice chairman. You haven't chewed me out too much. Have a good year. Mr. Nicolason, thank you for being chairman this year. I know it's hard work. Some things can get on your nerves, and we try to work it all out. Because we basically, I believe, all are for the people in Natrona County. And making life good for them. Mr. North, I told him earlier, I support you for the next chairman. I don't, I guess you would like to do that. And no one else has said anything to me about it, so I haven't had any other thoughts about it. I guess we take that up somewhere around the sixth of January. I know Casey gets sworn in on the sixth of January at eight o'clock in the morning. Takes about three minutes, Casey. And so, welcome to the commission next year. And so, I hope in the two years I've got left, that we can be an influence on lower taxes. Because I think our taxes are too high. I think that computer the state uses to set taxes is treacherous. And it's very difficult for people to challenge that. I don't like all these highfaluting rules to be passed dealing with how we have to run this county, because the way they do things all over the world isn't the way we do things in Wyoming. I'd like to protect Wyoming's way of life myself. And so, I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Commissioner North?
It's one of my favorite times of the year, and, and it's not because of the cookies and the chocolate and the other stuff that we all enjoy. This time of year, it seems like people kind of put aside a lot of their differences and look at what's important in their life. And, and for me, that's my relationship with God, as what he gave us, you know, here this time of year, at Christmas, and the gift he gave us. I think that's very important for us to focus on, that we all have our different ways. We all go different directions. And we all have different things that are important to us. But bottom line is, it's how we treat each other. And, and what we do with our lives. And I do want to thank Steve. Got to know him over the last couple of years. I'm sure you'll move on to bigger, better things, maybe, or just different things. One of those things, but anyway. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year.
Commissioner Millen?
So, reiterate everybody else's comments. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and all that jazz. We'll see you next year. Or, have a safe and wonderful Christmas. As far as Steve goes, Steve goes. All right, take care, man.
I'll go next. It's, I think, been a productive year. I'm proud of a lot of the accomplishments. I think we've made a lot of progress in a lot of areas. And I am once again thankful to staff that's worked really hard this year. Election and otherwise. I know that, Mr. Holbrook, you've been burning the candle at a number of ends, being the de facto planner. And, you know, we, we appreciate that. That's certainly a harder position to fill than I, than I thought, the county planner. In any event, I also wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and look forward to all the good that we can do next year on behalf of this great county. Turning to the guy on my far right, Steve Freel. You know, I, I think we, our paths crossed a little bit in the real estate business, off and on. But I didn't really know you at all. And I would say that it's been a privilege getting to know you over the last two years. I'm, I'm just really thankful for all the good work that you've done for the county. And, you know, you can, you should be proud of the work and the effort you put into it, because you made this commission and the guy sitting behind this table better. And I, I think staff and department heads and other elected officials would agree with that. So, thank you very much. We have a little something for you. So, on, on behalf of the commission and the county, I'm pleased to present to Steve Freel the, for your sincere dedication and service and for your years as Commissioner. Commissioner Freel?
Thank you. I did not run again. I think it's time that I take a short break. Not saying that I'm completely out of politics altogether, but it was time to take a break. I appreciate everything, every one of you commissioners on this current commission, the projects that we've gotten accomplished, we've got started as far as the lodge on the mountain. We're moving forward on the new health department. And I think one of the biggest things personally to myself is columbarium that's gonna be put into place at the beginning of January, so that people that are unclaimed and, and have no family that have ever come to collect them will have a final resting place. I wanted to write a few things down, and so I've, just bear with me as I read this. But I wrote this as, I guess, my con, my final thoughts before leaving. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve as Natrona County Commissioner over the past two years. It has been an honor to represent this community and work toward the betterment of Natrona County. As I step away from this role, I want to leave you with a few thoughts that I believe are critical for the commission's future success. To my fellow commissioners, you've been entrusted with an important responsibility to serve the people of this county. To do that effectively, personal differences must be set aside. Progress happens when we communicate openly, work collaboratively, and focus on what's best for our constituents, not on individual agendas. When commissioners work behind the scenes or pursue projects without involving others, it only hinders the progress that could be made together. Transparency and teamwork are the foundation of this. Transparency and teamwork are the foundation of this work, and without them, inefficiency will persist. I also want to emphasize the need for greater involvement. The chairman's position often carries the heaviest burden, and that weight should not fall on one set of shoulders alone. Every commissioner has a duty to step up, whether that's attending statewide meetings, conventions, or representing our county in key decisions across Wyoming. Being more engaged at every level strengthens our position and allows us to accomplish more as a team. To the public who's attended these meetings and shared their concerns during public comment, I want to acknowledge that many of you have come forward with thoughtful suggestions and constructive ways to address the issues you've raised. Your input has been invaluable. However, there are others who simply highlight problems without offering solutions. While identifying concerns is important, progress comes when we work together to find resolutions. Bringing forward ideas rather than focusing on gotcha moments or disagreements will move this county forward in a meaningful way. So, in closing, the theme is simple. Set differences aside, work together, and step up. If you do that, I am confident you will see a greater success in the years to come. It has been a privilege to serve, and I look forward to seeing the progress you can accomplish when working as one team with one goal: serving the people of Neptre County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Freel. And with that, we are adjourned. Oh, what? Oh, right, we're not adjourned. We, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Our public portion of the meeting is over.
So moved.
Second, for consideration of contracts.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're in executive session. Thank you. Good job, Jared.